Morning.
Okay, good morning. It is March fourteenth, eleven oh two AM. The hereby declare the meeting of the zoning board adjustments and appeals in order. Take a roll call?
Chris.
Someone do the roll call for us?
Thank you.
Board member Fleming?
Here.
Orber Mupata?
Here.
Orber Thompson?
Here.
Chair Mason?
Here.
Orber Fleming.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. Citizens may speak on items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk upon arrival prior to the board reaching the public comments section of the agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below will be heard when the specific hearing starts. Number four, items for individual consideration. Citizens may speak on items listed on the agenda as items for individual consideration. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk or board secretary before the board considers the item listed under the items for individual consideration. Citizen comments on items for individual consideration are limited to three minutes. Item five, public hearings. Citizens may speak on items listed on this agenda as public hearings. A request to speak card should...this is redundant.
Yeah, you don't need to repeat that.
Thank you. Move on to item A. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a variance request to defense height from four foot to six foot and to adjust the north and east property setbacks to be on the property line for property located on lot seven and E twenty five of eight consisting of zero point twenty-five eighty-three acres. Lot six consisting of zero point seventeen twenty-two acres. Lot five consisting of zero point seventeen twenty-two acres. Lot four consisting of zero point seventeen twenty-two acres. Lot three consisting of zero point seventeen twenty-two acres. Excuse me, and lots one and two, block eleven of the West End Edition GCAD property ID numbers one four one one forty-four, one four one one four five, one four one one four six, one four one one four seven, one four one one four eight, one four one one four nine, also known as seventeen twenty-eight West Morton Street. Case number twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty twenty...zero twenty-two V. Did I get the whole thing there?
Yes.
I guess I did. Uh, is the owner here?
Wait.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Julie, do we need to be sworn in or can I present the case?
Yes, first there's B and then C.
Yeah, okay. Uh, before we open the public hearing, are there any requests for postponement or jurisdiction issues that anyone would like to raise? There being none, move on to, uh...okay, is the owner here? Would you like to speak, sir? Please step up to the microphone there.
Sorry, I didn't put the mic in.
That's okay.
Not to pollute here, you don't need to call the car.
State your name and address, please.
My name is David Whittington with Consulting Unlimited. Address is nineteen oh four Rich Press Lane in Sherman, Texas.
Okay, any other gentleman?
My name is Tracy Goins, Goins Building Materials.
Okay, sure, please.
If you think that was a mouthful for you, you should have spent the last...
I'm sorry, I can't.
I said if you think that was a mouthful for you, you should have spent the last fifteen years trying to put it together. To buy all those pieces of property.
Swear you in. Uh, do you promise that everything you present here to this board is the truth?
Yes.
Okay, I do.
I do, yes.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to speak to the board?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Mason? Um, if you can also swear myself and Mary in and then I can present the case and then the property owner as well as the contractor can speak afterwards.
So I can swear you in?
Yes, yes, you'll need to swear me in also. I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand, please. You promise that everything you present here will be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
So I'll present the case and then you gentlemen are welcome to provide comment back or answer any questions. You're welcome to stand or you can just take a seat. Okay, thank you, sir. So this is the subject property. It consists of several lots. It's known as seventeen twenty-eight West Morton Street. Um, this property is zoned commercial and also falls within the Morton Street overlay boundary. Staff was made aware of the request for this particular fence via a permit. The applicant was requesting approval of a fence permit six feet in height to be erected along the property lines on the north portion of Morton Street and then down the eastern side of what is North Bush Avenue right of way. Staff then provided feedback to the contractor stating that this was noncompliant with the zoning ordinance subsection, or I'm sorry, section twenty-eight point five three point five, nonresidential fences and walls, subsection A, which calls for the requirement of the maximum height to be four feet and then also place ten feet from the property line. And this requirement is also the same for that eastern portion because the property abuts up to a street, even though it is unimproved. After this was made aware to the applicant for the permit, they then pursued a variance requesting, um, a variance to that requirement and they are proposing a six-foot fence to be erected on the property lines for the north and eastern portions stating that they have a hardship because the front setback per ordinance is not in alignment with the neighboring property setbacks and the fence height required does not allow for security of the property. There are some structures along Morton Street that do not meet the setback requirements. However, these are nonconforming structures that if they were to pursue any kind of redevelopment, additions, or if they were to expand, they would have to become compliant with the ordinance. This property is constructed new and therefore has to abide by the ordinance as it's stated. Excuse me. Furthermore, staff hasn't been made aware of what is going on the property, how it's going to be developed or redeveloped. We hold pre-application meetings in order to try and guide applicants or developers towards a, uh, towards compliance with the ordinance or provide opportunity for some to...ideas for something different. Staff has not been made aware of what's going on this property or how it's going to be redeveloped and it's possible that whatever type of development is being pursued at this location would require other, um, applications such as replating, um, as well as a site plan, which would then have to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission as this falls within an overlay district. As you can tell, um, based off of the site plan that's provided, these are individually platted lots. If the applicant were to push the fence back to the twenty-five foot, which is the front yard requirement and the, um, front yard setback requirement for the commercial zoning district, then the applicant would also need to replat these lots in order to avoid, um, erecting something over property lines. So there's quite a few things that kind of play into this, uh, this site as it sits right now. Furthermore, I'd like to also mention that...oh, I'm sorry, this is the proposed fence. The, um, the site has, uh, currently has gravel trucked in on it and I'm not sure what that purpose is. However, gravel is prohibited by the zoning ordinance, um, but we have not been made aware of why that gravel is there. Because the hardship that they state is because of prior setbacks and the inability to, um, utilize the property for its intended or their, their intended use, um, these do not meet the requirements of a hardship and for that reason, staff is recommending denial of the variance request. I'm present for any questions you have. I know there's a lot that I just kind of threw at you, so if you have any questions, I'm present for them and then the applicant is of course here.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Does their resubmitted plan bring in compliance with the setbacks?
They are still wanting to, um, erect a six-foot fence and then place it on the property lines, which does not. I understand that this is fifty percent open or it's at least somewhat open, which does help with visibility. However, the ordinance still states that it has to be, it cannot be any taller than four feet and it has to be setback ten feet from the property line.
Okay. Any other questions? Gentlemen, um, could you enlighten us about the gravel?
Yes, sir, the ordinance doesn't require...
Get a little closer to the microphone, please.
Uh, yes, sir, the ordinance allows for site improvement, cleanup, so forth. I've been acquiring this property over the course of the last fifteen years. That's why it's got individual lots because I've had to invest the money and the time to buy each one, you know, independently. And basically, we're creating a base. The ordinance requires a hard surface, be it concrete and/or asphalt, and we are creating a base and packing that base over time during the winter months. So it, it will be a asphalted or a chip and seal, uh, hard surface, uh, lot.
Okay. Uh, what kind of business are you going to put in there?
Home center, a home center, a very nice, uh, retail, clean home center. My wife's got visions of Mexican pots lining the streets of Morton in front of each post and hanging ferns from each post. It's about a, it's about a hundred thousand dollar fence.
Currently, it's been submitted for a building permit under a home improvement center.
Sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. Currently, it's been submitted to the building, uh, department for a permit for a home improvement center. So the lot will serve as a storage facility for materials, things like that.
Okay. Still concerned about the setback and I understand, you know, there are buildings that are not in compliance with zoning laws the way they are right now, but those businesses and buildings were in place before those changes were made to the zoning code. So as, uh, Ms. York mentioned, if they wanted to do something with their property later, then they would have to bring their property into compliance.
Yes, we're, we are, since it's just a fence and it aligns with everything.
Get closer to the microphone.
Sorry.
I'm hard of hearing as it is.
I apologize. Since, since it's just a fence and it falls in line with all of the other businesses and the fences running east and west on Morton Street.
But if you're referring to the machining, machining businesses just east of your property?
It is and they're...
They're, they're out of compliance where the, where the building is sitting right now.
Yes, sir. And there's other fences and buildings up and down the...we're, we're just staying in line with everything that's already there for cohesiveness and, and, and we feel it'll be very, very attractive. We feel like if it's set back, it'll look or appear to be out of place.
The, the zoning also does not allow for a six-foot fence.
Again, if you look at all the fences east and west on Morton Street, it, they're, they're six foot tall and a four-foot fence doesn't allow you to secure product. The, the, the way the, the way the ordinance is written, it's, it's kind of unusual because a, a fence of this caliber typically only goes on the very high-end, uh, residential housing and those houses are, those fences are typically about four foot tall. As a result of those fences typically being four foot tall, that's how the ordinance is written. But in reality, this is a wrought iron fence, which is six foot tall with decorative toppings, um, because you can get it in four foot and/or six foot.
Still, you know, they, I, I agree, there are lots of six-foot tall fences up and down Morton Street, but like I said before, those were in place before the zoning code was changed. So if they ever changed anything on their property or want to repair that fence, they'd have to come into compliance. Explain to me how this would be a hardship to you?
Well, without the six-foot tall fence, um, it would not be able to be converted into a home improvement center because of the security purposes. So that's hardship number one. The other one, uh, with the setback, in order to, if, if we bring the site plan back up, in order to create the roadway around the storage for emergency vehicles, fire, ambulance, whatever might need to be out there, uh, we needed the additional ten foot of the property to accomplish that twenty-four foot lane in order to have required emergency vehicles come through the property if ever needed.
The, uh, the number one complaint anytime you ask for anything is the citizens are always concerned about traffic. How's the traffic going to be impacted? We wanted to, we wanted to hold all of that traffic on-site. So it, so there would be no debate over the traffic issue.
Do you really have an entrance on the, on Bush Avenue?
So the entrance would be on Bush Avenue and the exit would be onto Morton Street.
So I, I don't know. Is that requirement for fire vehicles?
I'm, I'm, I guess, what, what's going on the property? It's, I mean, I'm trying to understand the fire lane and I appreciate you being mindful of emergency access, but I, I guess I don't understand, and this is one of the reasons why it would be helpful if we would have had like a pre-application meeting to understand how exactly you're wanting to redevelop the, the location, um, so that we could provide better feedback on the ordinances or what is required. Because to me, when you start putting in infrastructure such as a fire lane, you're looking at a site plan, um, and you're looking at staff reviewing as well as the Public Works Department, fire marshals approving, um, and so I guess I'm just concerned exactly what's going on the property. And if you are utilizing Bush Avenue, there may be other requirements from Public Works because that is an unimproved surface over there. So those are a couple of things to think about when you're, when we're looking. It's a couple of things we've been thinking about when looking at the site plan and hearing now that you're wanting to put in the fire lane, it, it opens up a lot of other concerns.
So will they be required to replat for, to do this at all?
Yes, sir. Yeah, a fire lane, any kind of improvements like that would require a replat. Any kind of expansion to the building that exists would require a replat.
So am I correct in thinking none of that process has taken place yet?
No, sir.
Well, we're, we're not going to replat if we have to, if we have to break it down and separate it into individual lots, there's no sense in replating it. I mean, uh, I don't, I don't want to...
I think what they're wanting to do is replat it in the one, one property.
Right, but if, but if we can't, if, if, if we have to go through all this lengthy process, then we might as well just break it down into individual lots and sell off the individual lots rather than create a, a multi-million dollar business for the city of, of Dennison and of course ourselves. And we may have misspoke by referencing that as a fire lane. We just didn't want the traffic to have to come on and go off of Morton Street and have to fight that public, uh, perception.
Yeah, I appreciate your concern about that, that the traffic on Morton is what it is now.
Right, right.
So I don't think this is going to impact it that much.
It's not. That's why we're alleviating it to Bush. If, if you notice on the drawing, it's, it's set up so that it's just a giant horseshoe. Everything stays on the property. Everything enters the property, exits. There are one, two, three, there are three possible exits, three possible entrances.
I, I'm still not, I'm, it's not real clear to me of why you need a ten-foot fence.
Six-foot fence. Well, I mean, pots, uh, panels, there's all kinds of inventory that, that is of value, uh, that you just don't want somebody to step over and be able to pick it up and carry it off. I mean, coal services, they're protect, they protect their machinery with a six-foot fence.
Yeah.
The roofing place, they have to protect all of their inventory with a six-foot fence. The fire department, I mean, it protects itself with a, it's an eight-foot fence, isn't it? An eight-foot fence. The, the city of Dennison protects their vehicles with the, with the six-foot wrought iron fence. Uh, I mean, we could go on and on, but there's just no way to protect the facility if the people that walk up and down Morton Street have the ability to step over and steal our inventory. We're going to have inventory that'll come in on occasion and be set out, left out overnight.
So I just want to be clear from staff, so I, I kind of feel like this is putting the cart before the horse where, I mean, even just to do the improvement on your property that you put down the gravel, you still need to go through the city's permitting process and the development process to even get to this point where you're wanting to do the fence. So I, I think you're way ahead of where you should be and you should have started with the development process.
Just to clarify, um, for, we currently don't have a flatwork permit, so if they are pursuing, um, you know, a parking lot at that location, there's not a permit for that. It's just we haven't been told what, what it is that's going there.
You got any comments?
Okay. Well, I was just going to give you a little more clarification of what the yard is used for. Of course, it's storage, but the, the, the drive is for customers to come in and out, to load and unload, um, and to enter and exit the facility. So customer drives in, they pick up their, their order, um, and then they drive out. So it's a, it's a, not, not, not a fire lane, but it is a, just a traffic lane for customers to come in to get their merchandise.
So I guess in my understanding, that would be a use for the property, but there's not a use assigned through the permitting process, is that right? Like, is, is there a use assigned to this property right now?
So we have not gotten to that point yet where it would come before zoning for approval.
Okay, but that needs to happen first.
That's correct. In terms of having access onto Bush, any development that comes through, if they, if the surface has to be improved, then that's on the developer to do that. So Bush will have to meet, be brought up to the standards, um, for that road and if they're not so already. But as Diane said, in, if we have pre-development meetings, that's where we get to all of this stuff, right? So we could have, uh, avoided getting to this meeting. We would have told you, you had to replat those lots into one. We would have told you what was expected from the fire lane standpoint, as well as the road improvements, as well as the approaches on Morton Street. That, that involves other departments as well.
Have you been able to get ahold of anybody whenever you've made phone calls? Because I've made several and I can't ever get anybody to call me back.
Takes time to get back to us, yeah, but, um, well, yeah, that, that brings me to the, the building permit, you know, we're still waiting for that, just to do renovations on the building. And I think we're approaching the thirty days roughly. Um, so, so we were just trying to get the site secured with the fence and try to get some clarification on whether we could put it on the property line in order to start the, uh, flatwork improvement, more or less, and to protect, keep people from driving on a new flatwork that's been installed.
Will they get a building permit to go ahead with this without having approval from planning and zoning?
So it depends on if you're expanding that structure as it sits. It depends on how much you're expanding, but also that lot is not a platted lot, it's an illegally subdivided lot. That's the lot, um, I don't have it in front of me, but it's the one where it's the east twenty-five feet of lot eight. And so before any additions are made to that, that, those lot lines would need to be cleaned up. Uh, but furthermore, depending on the size of that addition, it could, um, prompt you to have to do a site plan, a formal site plan submittal that would have to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and that is written in our ordinance as well because of the overlay that it falls into. So I can't, I haven't seen the permit itself, but it's possible that those are a couple of the things that are holding it up.
Well, it would be nice if there was someone that, from staff or the city, that we would be able to make contact with because we've made multiple calls without success.
I have had multiple conversations and text messages with you.
I've, I've had one conversation with you and tried, I mean, I don't know, because I don't remember who I spoke to, but I did have one conversation with you and I made multiple phone calls after that and multiple texts and have been able to, have been unable to reach you. I didn't realize you were the person that I'd been trying to get in contact with all this time. Matter of fact, I even asked that, uh, uh, Tony Kye reach out to you and, uh, Mark Kuhneman, uh, and, um, and others as well that have, have attempted to help me navigate these waters because I don't know who to talk to with the city because I've been unsuccessful in...
I...
I'm not trying to create confrontation, I'm just, I'm just making mention of how difficult it is to get ahold of people with city staff.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're going through, but, um, I, I think the proper procedure is go to planning and zoning first and get approval from them and then come to us.
Well, that, we, yeah, I attempted that.
Yeah, I hate to delay, you know, anything you want to do and I don't want to discourage you from opening a new business, but procedures are procedures and I, I would encourage you to follow that.
And I will state that this plan, this fence permit is, you know, why we're here today and this permit cannot be approved by staff as it's been presented, which is why we're here. It's for the variance request to go against the ordinance. I can't approve that, uh, fence permit because it does go against the ordinance. So if, if you're seeking approval for the fence, I, I can't help you. That's why we're here today, um, to...
And that's where we come here, right?
That's why we're here.
Which is the only thing that we're here for is...
You're right. However, because of looking at this now as a full plan and what your idea is for this property, and I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying that now that we have the full scope of it, while the fence is still noncompliant, it would have been, um, it would have been a little bit easier for us to navigate these waters with you if we had had that pre-application meeting instead of stopping with the fence and then pursuing a variance. But that's where also my communication stopped because then I have to pursue, I, the staff report and bringing it before the variance as well. I can't help you on the fence anymore after that, if that makes sense.
And I, I do apologize. We did try to have a pre-application meeting that was canceled by the city. Unfortunately, the deadline to submit was the Friday of that week and so we couldn't meet the following week. Um, so I didn't know if we could have had one after it was submitted.
Was this during the ice storm when it was canceled?
It was right after the ice storm, but it was, I think y'all do them on Thursdays.
We do, however...
So I, I guess we could have had one after the application was submitted, but I did not, I was not informed that we could do that. I thought we had to do it before.
We make accommodations all the time. I mean, we, we work with several individuals and this is, you're not...
So that's my apologies. I guess I misunderstood.
It's okay. You wouldn't be the only person that we meet with outside of these, outside of our normal parameters because Thursdays don't always work for everybody. And given the time of the original meeting, um, with the ice storm, we, that next week was making up for a lot of time that we, we lost because we were out for four days.
So could we just reschedule it and start over?
I mean, I'd just like to have a, I'd just like to have a point of contact with someone that I can make contact with and get in touch with that person consistently.
You have my cell phone number.
But I, yes, ma'am, but I've been unable to reach you many, many times.
So I'm sorry, but I'm going to interrupt. That, that is not evidence for the board. Their only jurisdiction is to decide whether or not the evidence shows that a hardship is met sufficient to grant the variance and that, the evidence on that is really all they can take into consideration under the law. So your testimony needs to be about the, the hardship and staff's happy to talk to you at the end of the meeting about next steps.
Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? I'll entertain a motion at this point.
Mr. Chair, I, I move to...
Wait, we had to close the public hearing.
So could I ask one more question before we leave?
Certainly, just speak into the mic, please.
Sure. So are y'all opposed entirely to a six-foot fence? Because if I can't have... Because if I can't have a six-foot fence, I'm going to break the lots up into individual lots.
Well, just, let, let me, let me answer that. It doesn't, it's not whether they're opposed to the fence or not. They may all think the fence is beautiful, their hands are tied by, do you meet the requirements for a hardship to get the variance? It, it's not a matter of whether or not they like it, it's whether or not a hardship has been met.
Gotcha, so was it simpler for us just to not to apply for a hardship and, and build a six-foot fence and set it back to the property line easements? Because we can do that too.
I really can't comment on that.
I'd go back through the planning and zoning. They'll give us guidance on whether we can build the six-foot fence or not.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a six-foot fence in my backyard, but I'm allowed to have a six-foot fence there.
Yeah.
Um, and I would not want a four-foot fence there.
Well, I mean, neither does the police department, neither does the fire department, yeah, I get it. We're just trying to put a nice, attractive, cosmetically...
And we're trying to do the best we can to get you in business up on Morton Street. It's just that we have to follow certain rules and there's certain procedures that have to be taken.
Could I ask a quick question? Can you give me an example of a new business coming in? What would be, for a six-foot fence and the setback, what would be a hardship example?
That, I'm going to object to that as not relevant to whether or not this property meets the requirements for a hardship. She's happy to talk to you after the meeting about other businesses.
Any more questions or comments, then the open portion of this meeting is closed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, appreciate your time, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You look hard, I can get it.
Now, owner, entertain a motion at this point.
Mr. Chair, uh, I move to deny the variance request to the maximum height of four feet for fences located in the front yard and side yard of a corner lot and a minimum setback of ten feet from the property for both front and side yards. Get the site listed above.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who wants to do the second?
You got it.
All right, we, we have a, the motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There being none, then the motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, the meeting is now adjourned.